Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county Administrator-Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials, impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator-Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, its life well-run.
Good morning.
Good news already.
It is my pleasure to welcome everyone to the Finance and Fiscal Resources Committee Meeting on Tuesday, July 17th. It is 8:30 a.m. I'm going to start the meeting with public comment. Is there any public this morning that would like to address the Finance and Fiscal Resources Seeing none, we will close public comment, and I'll move to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So.
Okay, we have moved and supported. Any items that need to be polled? Yes, Commissioner Hennessy.
I would like to call D and G.
D and G.
That's D as in doggy?
Yes.
What's the other one?
G as in good.
E as in good.
Then I believe we can approve the consent agenda with the exception of the items D through G. All those in-
No, not D and G.
Right.
Not D through G.
I'm sorry, D and G. So I meant and. So consent agenda, we're looking to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the items D and G. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. So let's go to item D that was polled.
Yes, I can read this. What?
Do we need a motion to approve it first?
Same person.
We can do the motion first or we can do the read first? It's up to you, Chair.
Do the read.
Okay, we'll do the read first.
Okay. So this is a request to the Board to approve the Health Department's Michigan Public Health Training Center contract and accept and appropriate $40,000 from the Michigan Public Health Training Center to the 2017-2018 Health Fund Budget, and to authorize a board chair or designated to execute the agreement and approve grant extensions and charges within 15% of the original award. The Health Department has received the grant from the University of Michigan School of Public Health to serve as a community-based training partner for the Region 5 Michigan Public Health Training Center. The purpose of the regional training center is to strengthen the capacity of the Region 5 health force, work, health workforce, to deliver public health services and improve population health outcomes through tailored workforce development initiatives, which includes the following: participation on advisory boards and committees to provide feedback and strategic direction, regional coordination of worker and student-focused training initiatives, facilitating faculty-student collaborative projects, hosting one-student field placement per year, assisting with marketing and recruitment, and training activities including training needs assessment and continuing education activities. The Health Department will receive $10,000 per year for four years to cover the cost of staffing and miscellaneous supplies, travel, and overhead costs. The agreement period for the contract is July 1, 2018, through June 20, 2022.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Support.
Okay, moved and supported. Questions, comments, and discussion. Why don't we start with Commissioner Hennessy?
Well, I asked for it to be removed just simply so we could highlight what's being done and to inform ourselves more about it. It sounds like a really interesting grant to be receiving from the University of Michigan School of Public Health in over four years. I just wanted to hear more about it.
Come on up, Adam London.
Good morning, and thank you for recognizing the work. We've been working with the University of Michigan and with all of our other universities here locally to build this relationship between practice and public health and research and academia and public health. The University of Michigan has been a leader certainly in the state with their school of public health. There's a Region 5, which is the Great Lakes region of states, that receives a state or a grant from HERSA, the federal agency, to be a regional training center for public health officials in that region. The University of Michigan has won that grant for the next four years to be that provider of workforce development in the region. In that role, they need to have local health departments where they can place students, where they can place faculty, where they can work collaboratively with the local practitioners, and also to train people in the public health workforce locally and through the region. So through this relationship, we expect to see an even stronger partnership with academia. We think that that's going to advance our purposes by building the workforce locally, by strengthening our connectivity with research, so we can better understand public health issues here in West Michigan. And really, it's a win-win for us and for the university, and for the students, of course.
Okay, Commissioner Bukowski?
Yeah. What you just described is excellent, and we should be part of that. It's great that they recognized the quality department that you run and all those good things. My main question is, you know, $10,000 is, by the time you, you know, they cut the check and we administer the check, you know, .08 FTEs is our value add. I mean, like, how much really is part of this project? I mean, is this grant a fraction of a fraction, or like, what, how does it all really come together?
Yeah, so it's pretty small involvement really from our part. We're really offering ourselves as a location for their placement of a student and a faculty person. We're also offering our facility as kind of the regional training ground zero for public health practitioners in West Michigan. So there's not going to be a lot of time added to our involvement beyond what we're already doing with academic health department, sort of partnerships with all the universities. So this isn't going to add much work really on our part. We're going to, as the action request indicates, do more marketing. We're going to try to advocate for the use of this, to bring in people from around the region, but there's not going to be a whole lot of additional work required on our part.
All right, thank you.
Hey. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. That pulls us to item G. Go ahead.
Sure, I'll read this. Yes, this is a request to authorize to negotiate and award a two-year incentive-based inmate healthcare services contract extension at the Kent County Correctional and Juvenile Center facilities. Request for proposal of 1205 for inmate health services was issued in July 2013. The responses were evaluated and contract awarded to Horizon Health, Inc. of Brentwood, Tennessee. RFP allows for the contract to be extended if it appears to be in the best interest of the county. Sheriff Department is in the process of implementation of a new jail management software system. Part of this implementation involves work with existing healthcare provider for the development of an interface between the healthcare software and jail management software. Sheriff Department and purchasing believe the continuation of established, of the established inmate healthcare services by the current provider is in the best interest of the county to facilitate the completion of the healthcare implementation. And due to the limited ability to identify a replacement healthcare service provider competent to provide the unique healthcare services needed in a correctional facility in current economic conditions, Sheriff Department and purchasing will finalize a two-year incentive-based contract extension for January 1, 2019, through December 31, 2020. The proposed two-year extension is presented to the committee as the originally approved contract provided for single-year extensions. Contract extension will be executed after corporate counsel has reviewed and approved the extension form.
Is there a motion to approve?
Support.
Okay, moved and supported. Questions, comments, and discussion. Commissioner Hennessy.
Again, I just sort of pulled this for information's sake, to see, I guess this is coming in front of us because it was allowed one-year extensions, and this is a two-year. I wanted a refresher on what the incentive-based portion of this is, and if there's a change in costs.
Kel Brink, probably could answer that, and Chuck DeWitt from the Sheriff's Department, both here today.
Good morning. What we write in the contract is incentive for the service provider to meet objectives, and specifically around outside services. And so we have a 1.3 million aggregate cap, which pays for pharmaceutical outside services. And the provider has incentive through innovation and looking at overall cost to stay under that cap. If they come under the cap, the money is reimbursed back to the county. If they go over the cap, the provider carries the biggest percentage of the payment that goes in excess. So the provider has a lot of incentive to look for initiatives that save money.
Does that possibly come at the expense of an inmate who might need something other than, or is it serious to work against the individual who needs care by watching the costs?
Great question. Absolutely not, because it's covering the outside services. And what you do is you look for ways to provide good services in-house as opposed to bringing out of house, which is very expensive. It also looks at pharmaceuticals, and you look at a holistic. So it's not that you're cutting pharmaceuticals, but along with the Office of the Sheriff and myself, we evaluate this contract every three months, and we look for ways collectively to control cost and provide excellent services.
Is the contract leaving you with the same prices and costs as it has been in the past, or is there a-
The contract has, well, we're not finished yet, so we're still working through it. And when you look at the contract, you also look at staffing levels to make sure they're adequate, so it's not quite apples to apples. The contract compared to 2013 and 14, when we entered into it, is an increase of about 3.5%. So the Office of Sheriff has done an excellent job of controlling costs, providing services, looking for ways to control costs. But there is a increase, potential increase next year, and it's related to the employment market and to maintaining medical staff and being able to hire medical staff to staff this. We looked at it, along with Chief Deputy DeWitt, on what is included in the increase. And about 42% of the increase, it's about 3.5% since 2013, is related to market conditions.
I could ask one more question.
Go ahead.
So what kind of staffing, I remember refreshing my own memory of this, it's been a few years. What kind of staffing do we have?
It's a full array of medical services. It runs on three shifts. In total, at the adult facility, it's a little over 40 full-time equivalent employees. So it's very, very significant. It includes nursing, includes some psychiatrists, includes doctors, dental, and everything you would imagine in a very large facility that covers medical needs, it's in there.
Okay, Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hey, Kel. So the renewal is in the contract, and it's based on how it benefits the county. So I think we're in a pretty good position as we go into negotiations, aside from the marketing conditions. Just a comment, I remember years ago that we really tried to get a handle on some of these costs because-
We did.
-they were going off the charts. And this contract seems to get us where we needed to go from those, that time when the costs were really getting out of control.
Yeah, it's very managed very, very well. You are correct. As far as business process, the Sheriff Department, myself, and some others meet quarterly with the provider, and we review the contract and the whole aspect, not only from the contract, but for adequate medical care, because that's a very important part. And so we meet quarterly and formally and review the contract to manage it. And are always looking for ways to manage costs and still provide good service, which is very important.
I just want to add a little context to where we were.
Thanks. Commissioner Bukowski?
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Hennessy, for pulling this out of consent. What is the annual cost on this? I mean, when you gave us the RFP sheet, you know, just talked about that original bid of, from five years ago.
Sure. The, actually, I am, is the two-year cost. The annual cost for the first year enterprise-wide, because we also talk about juvenile detention, is 5.9 million, just a little over 5.9 million.
Okay. And, you know, not for today's conversation, but I don't know if it's for the chief deputy or somebody else to send along, like, how many units of service do we, do they deliver under this contract? I mean, is that an easy spreadsheet or report to send along to us? And again, I'm not looking to create extra work for you all.
When you say units of service, what-
Like, again, when you said psychiatry and dental, like, how many, how many different visits are we getting?
Case load.
Case loads. Thank you, Commissioner Morgan.
I'm not a attorney, but-
Yeah.
I am a attorney, that's what confuses me. This is about real-world stuff. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Good morning. Are you interested in clerical or nursing-only, doctors?
Just within this contract, I mean, is there like a single dashboard or something that you'd be watching to say, like, you know, we usually have, just making numbers up, 100 dental visits a month. This month, we had 300. And just how are you watching, how much service are we providing? Kind of following on Commissioner Hennessy's question about, you know, I understand insurance and what have you, and maybe I have a bad attitude at this moment because a good friend had a heart procedure not authorized by his insurance company for this morning, and doctor says heart attack, and all of these things. And some insurance companies sometimes are great people and sometimes seem not to be our best friends. And so I'm just wanting to make sure that the inmates, in spite of the fact that they've lost their liberty due to some of their actions, still are getting quality care, and how are we really watching all of that? So, again, I'm not saying you're not. I'm just wanting to see a little bit how you're watching that, what are some of those numbers, and the volume of service that we're paying $6 million.
Sure. So, no, I do not have those numbers with me, but Horizon does track that type of information, and we'll forward it to you.
All right, awesome, thanks.
You bet.
Thank you. Commissioner Voorhees.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. To that point, I know, I look at the minutes of human resources, and I really felt great about how our county has set up accountability numbers, you know, and I think that's kind of what I'd like to see, too. So you have a kind of a running tally of what's happening in that department and that arena.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll get those numbers to you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. That brings us to the item three on the agenda from the Administrator's Office. Wayman?
Yes, this is a request to the Board of Commissioners to appropriate an additional $470,000 in the 2018 Senior Milage Fund Budget from Senior Milage Fund Reserves. Funding from the Senior Milage provides services such as meals, transportation, healthy aging programs, legal services, prescription assistance, weatherization, and in-home care. Air agents on aging administer the Senior Milage and contract with agencies that provide senior services. The Board of Commissioners approve $11.1 million for the 2018 service plan via Resolution 11301790. To bring the services plan in line with available resources, it is requested that an additional $470,000 be appropriated from Senior Milage Fund Reserves to the 2018 Milage Fund Budget.
So.
Okay, we have moved and supported. Questions, comments, and discussion. Commissioner Bukowski?
Just the comment, since it's Senior Milage, I will be abstaining. Disability Advocates, I believe, has already requested a small portion of this.
Okay. Commissioner Hennessy?
As I understand this, one, when the senior milage allocations are made, we don't always know what the tax return will be, and two, we do keep some money in return, in reserve, because we do not know exactly how much there will be sacrificed.
That's correct. That's correct. Commissioner Hennessy.
I'd like to know, is this allocation, did it go through the process?
Of the senior milage group, yes. And the process, as I understand it, is that the Administrator's Office gets a communication from Senior Milage, from them about what the balance is and what the needs are, and then we work with the Fiscal Services Department to identify what the reserves are.
But it doesn't go through the committee? Because the committee has a very detailed evaluation process. Matthew, you want to come up and explain how this gets allocated to the different services?
Yeah, so last year, we talked about this at the conclusion of the committee process, if there would be extra money available this year, how those funds would be utilized, and we'd expand the capacity of certain programs with waiting lists. And then also, mid-year, we meet, and we reviewed the status of where our programs were at and whatnot. So there was conversation about, you know, if this were to move forward, how would we expend the money? And again, waiting lists and services were prioritized in that process. So this is, yeah, I think we have a good process in place that includes the committee, but also looks at the data to see where the needs are in the community.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Chair. So what balance is left in there after we take the 470?
I believe, Marvin can correct me if I'm wrong, but about $200,000 is the number, I do believe, that will be left, left in the balance.
Thank you.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Matthew. Of the 470,000, is that money going to be spent, or is it placed in reserve? Because it says here, "plan in line with available resources." Is it available the same as needed?
Yeah, it is, because we're using waiting lists and other indicators to distribute this money now, to hopefully utilize it this year. If there's not a need, we're not going to spend the money, and that's AAA's and the agencies work on that. And then that money will be lapsed, and it'll go back into the Senior Milage Fund.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you, Matthew. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes.
Abstention.
With one abstention. Thank you. That leaves us to item four from the Administrator's Office, Fiscal Services. Wayman?
Yes, this is a request to approve the list of capital projects to be included in the preparation of the 2019 county budget. 2019 CIP requests were reviewed and recommendation prepared by staff committee, including representatives from the Parks Facilities Management Information Technology, Sheriff, Purchasing Administration, and Fiscal Services. The Administrator's recommendation was reviewed in detail by the County Board of Commissioners. The recommended list includes 35 projects at an anticipated cost of $9.3 million. Financing for the 2019 recommended projects is anticipated to be drawn from general fund support of $5.8 million and $3.4 million from other service sources. With the concurrence of the Finance and Fiscal Services Committee, funding for these projects will be included in the 2019 budget resolution scheduled for Board approval on November 29, 2018.
Okay. All, okay, moved to pass and supported by Commissioner Hennessy. Questions, comments, and discussions. Commissioner Bukowski?
I'm just going to reiterate my comment that we've had, or that I've made at the work sessions. Definitely appreciate staff's hard work on this and going through the whole process and all of that. My hope is that, you know, we're going to spend some time on what really are our capital needs over the next five or 10 years. When we talk about a North Kent Service Center, we mention things like Park Headquarters. It just, there's a lot of larger projects, and how we could potentially get our arms around a 15, 20-year plan for this, as opposed to each year kind of just, I don't, this is way more than just nibbling at the edges. However, to say, "we need to do this stuff," like that North Kent Service Center, and, you know, and we tell the voters, and they're going to say, "Yeah, keep doing good things because it's about good service." So definitely, again, appreciate all the hard work that this represents, and wanting to look at 20 years out, not just one. So.
Anyone else? Mr. Antor.
Just real quickly, I'm really impressed with this, the amount of work that goes into this, and thought, and forethought, and trying to figure out how this is best used. And I know a lot of parts of the state don't do this, because we're doing things that aren't too sexy sometimes, we're spending some money that you won't see, but that really makes a difference. And I've seen it just for other parts of the state where they spend a lot of money needlessly, or for things that, more bling, I guess you could call it. I love this process, and I just think, I go through this and look at all the work and all the different things you have to weigh against each other. And I just think we do a really good job of that, so.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. That brings us to item five from the Health Department.
Yes, this is a request to the Board of Commissioners to accept funding from the Michigan Department of Health Human Services for PFAS of $520,450, and to appropriate $50,000 of this funding to the 2017-18 Health Fund Budget. The Health Department received notice from Department of Health Human Services that $520,000 will be provided to cover the costs incurred in the investigation and response to PFAS contamination in Kent County. In April of 2017, the Health Department became aware of an investigation regarding contaminated groundwater in the Belmont area by the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. In the months that have followed, the number of sites being investigated for PFAS contamination within Kent County has continued to expand. The Health Department has been on the front lines of informing and educating residents regarding test results, the known health consequences of PFAS, and ways to limit exposure. Health Department has organized meetings, bringing the Michigan Department of Health Human Services, MDEQ, and Wolverine Worldwide together to address residents' questions and concerns. Staff from throughout the Health Department have incurred significant hours in investigating and responding to the contamination areas in Kent County. Most of the funding increase in the CPBC agreement will be used to reimburse the county for $470,000 in costs previously incurred by the county and subsidized by the County General Fund. The Health Department is requesting that the remaining $50,000 of this funding be appropriated to the Health Department's 2017-18 budget to cover the cost of software enhancements, as well as the purchase of a new plotter printer. The funding is retroactive to October 1, 2017, and must be spent by September 30, 2018.
So a motion- So a motion to approve? Moved.
Or?
Moved and supported. Questions, comments, and discussion. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I think there's, just the Health Department's been, and the staff there has been deserving of a Most Valuable Player award, and you all know that I, I'm not a firm believer in everyone gets a trophy, but. As far as their work on this issue, and I've had the chance to interact with them on some of these PFAS issues at the airport, I just think they've been doing an outstanding job, so.
Commissioner Bukowski?
Definitely echo Commissioner Morgan's comments. You know, our Health Department continues to, again, provide awesome, excellent service to our residents as well as continue to be a leader, as was evidenced by, you know, the partnership with the University of Michigan. However, the quick question I have is, it seems like we've netted only $50,000 of this $500,000 because they've reimbursed us for $470,000. Did we borrow that, do we spend that $470,000 in anticipation of potential reimbursement? Or are there additional dollars that could be, I mean, is there any of this real money or is it reimbursement in the hopes? Does my question make any sense?
I believe so.
All right. You're a better man than us.
We expended money from our general fund toward this response, and that $470,000 is our estimate for what that total cost is for this fiscal year.
Yep.
And we did that because it was the right thing to do.
Absolutely.
And the state has a commitment to counties to share in the cost of essential public health services. To their credit, they have recognized that, and our Kent County representatives, and especially Sanders, Hildenbrand, and McGregor, along with Representatives Brinkes and Affendulis and Verhulen, have been very vocal champions of the need for the state to share this responsibility with the locals, and that's why we're seeing this commitment, really statewide, to support the work that county health departments are doing in this area of PFAS. So we did expend the money, and there was a cost to us, because a lot of that time that was spent doing work on PFAS was time that wasn't spent on influenza and lead and other priorities. And so failing, the state failing, if they had failed to meet this commitment, would have been a very dangerous precedent going forward when we need to count on that partnership and that support if we're going to meet all of our responsibilities across the spectrum of public health. So, yes, this is really a relationship between us and the state. In total, when we look at our essential public health services, we're still receiving less than half support from the state, which is still a priority and still an issue that we continue to push in Lansing, but this certainly helps this year to get us closer to that 50-50 share.
So, I mean, real quick, so at the end of the day, there isn't, of that $470,000, since it was expended out of the general fund?
That's right.
And those resources, it's reimbursing the general fund?
Correct.
That $470,000 in the general fund, can it be released to other priorities or is it going to go to lapse or where, I mean, what's the net on our bottom line of this $470,000?
So one of the challenges we've faced is the timing of this money.
Right.
In December, early January is when the state legislature appropriated this funding, however, the department didn't get it out to us. And if you look at the end of the fiscal year for the Health Department, it's 9:30. So basically, this is going to be reimbursing our general fund expenses, and then we're appropriating $50,000 of new additional funding that they'll be able to expend above their current number on the software and the other tools that they need in response to be prepared for future work. So in terms of, we're fortunate, we have the county here as a backstop for these emergent needs and to get the funding, but right now, this is really, is reimbursing us for dollars we fronted, and so we're only expending extra $50,000 in authorization to spend.
All right, thank you.
And we do expect a similar level of support from the state with emerging environmental issues like this in the coming fiscal year, and we're planning for that in our budget so that we can expend that and use the general fund dollars more broadly across that greater spectrum of issues.
You may remember also, we've expended dollars so far, we've added additional staff this past year.
Right.
So this helps offset that expense as well, as well as overtime hours that have been expended resulting from the need to stay on top of this. So those numbers aren't, those dollars aren't necessarily going to be available at the end of the year. Those are being spent up with what we've done to.
Yeah, Wayman brings up a great point in that when we added those two positions for ODUAD and for emerging environmental issues.
Right.
We took money out of our emerging issues fund, which has really been our one barrel of dry powder that we use for emergencies, and we try not to spend that.
Right.
Which put us in a very vulnerable position. This allows us to return some of that money and to maintain that resource while also maintaining that service and that staffing for the community.
All right, thank you.
Thanks to have that resource.
Commissioner Antor?
How much do we keep in that emergency? Is there a threshold that we want us to try to keep or supplement to a certain number?
It has ranged from year to year between $150,000 and $250,000.
Yeah, and I like to echo everything that the other commissioners have said about your work. On occasion, I'll have to call the DEQ, and my point person is Abby Hendershot, and I always apologize when I call her, because I know she's extremely busy, but there are some things that only she can answer, and she says, you don't have to apologize to me. She said, we're not working half as hard as the Health Department is, and I know they're working extremely hard. And she, that from her meant a lot to me when she said that. So anyhow, we know this is not done by any means. The target continues to move on this PFAS, and I know there's some EPA guidelines that may be shifting things in the future, where they may be dropping it from 70 parts per trillion down to a number that I can't even fathom. I mean, it's, we're talking about parts per trillion, and it's, you know, we're talking a drop in a swimming pool, Olympic sized pool sometimes. But it is going to shift and change, and I'm wondering, in the future, as we move forward, we're probably going to need additional measures for these things in the future. I got a feeling maybe we could go through this all again here in another year, and I was just wondering if we will have access to more money? Will that be something that our state legislators have to help us procure again?
I hope the answer is yes. You know, we've got great relationships with our Sanders and representatives, and I think, by and large, they get it, they understand, and I hope they continue to remain supportive of the work that the county is doing, because we're really on the front lines with these issues, and we're in the best position in many cases to serve the community better than anybody else. And we can't predict what next year's issue might be. We didn't know about PFAS a year and a half ago. The year before, that was vapor intrusion, and next year might be something completely different. So our ability to remain capable and funded and resourced so that we can roll the punches of what the science and what information tells us is really important. So I hope that we all work to keep that relationship between here and Lansing and our representatives very strong.
I think the EPA, they're going to come up with a number, and how they derive that number, I have no idea. Seems like there may be some politics involved with that, but there's a big push to lower that number to get it, and it just seems like, are they going to lower it because of science or are they going to lower it because of politics or is it a combination of the two? So I just think we need to be aware that this is probably going to rear its ugly head again in the future, and everybody that currently has an in-home filter because their threshold or their parts per trillion was too high, if we drop that down to 14 or something, that everybody that's got parts that we now accept, they're going to need in-home filters, this could get really, really brutally ugly. I'm not saying we shouldn't protect those folks, but numbers are pretty arbitrary right now, I don't know how they're deriving them. Once we open this up, I mean, everybody where I live has arsenic in their, you know, trace amounts of arsenic, orchards around the area and stuff, so. Anyhow, I just hope that we're aware of the fact that this is probably going to continue to be something we're dealing with for potentially many years to come.
Very complex.
Thank you.
Adam, can you just quickly address the connection between the software enhancements and the plotter printer with PFAS? Because it's a PFAS, you know, amount of money that was coming in for that, and can you just share how that two are connected?
Yes. The software enhancements would be for software that is used to support environmental health, and they're handling of property file data. We have probably 100,000 files of property, we're working to scan those, to digitize those, to turn all into electronically accessible and user-friendly data that will help us to understand all of the environmental variables much better than we do now. So that will help us greatly when we're looking at geology profiles and mapping of wells and so forth. We're also looking at improvements to our statistical software so that we can better understand the epidemiology of what's happening and have greater control of the numbers with epidemiology and with other variables related to PFAS concentrations. And then the plotter is simply that, it's a tool that allows us to make nice, big maps that help us to communicate to the public what's happening and where it's happening.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, or discussion? Thank you, Adam. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. The motion passes. That brings us to item number six from Kent County Community Action. Wayman?
Yes, this is a request to the Board of Commissioners to approve the agreements providing community development block grant funds to certain agencies for services to eligible residents and to authorize the board chair or designate to execute the agreements and approve extensions and changes within 15% of the original award. As a part of the community development block grant program, United States Department of Housing and Urban Development has allocated CDBG entitlement funds to the community development department for services to eligible residents of the participating urban county communities. The Kent County Community Action proposes agreements with listed agencies for a term of July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019, for housing in the amount of $40,000, home repair services in the amount of $200,000, Hope Network $137,800, Senior Neighbors $65,000 for a total of $442,800. Proposed agreements will be reviewed and approved by corporate council.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And support? Okay, moved and supported. Questions, comments, and discussion. We'll start with Commissioner Mast.
I just have a couple, probably to Matthew or to Susan. Is this all we're getting from HUD? This is, okay, this is a portion of it.
Welcome back, Matthew.
Yeah, thank you. No, $1.5 million, and the rest goes to local units of government for projects. So we're working right now, I believe, with Kentwood on a large project, and we shared with you some earlier projects, I think, in the consent agenda that we've completed.
So is this under their current fiscal year allocation?
Yeah, starting July 1 through June 30. July 1 of 2018, start date for these kinds, this.
Is this the budget, from the budget that was approved this past March? So it's the federal government's fiscal year 18 budget, more likely?
I'm going to look at Susan, but the federal government's budgets have been on continuing resolutions so long that I'm not certain which fiscal year it's from.
Well, I guess I raise that because I wonder what's coming, you know, what potentially, how does this relate to what we've gotten in the past?
It's about the same amount.
Yeah, it's about the same. Not a decrease, which was.
No, it was a slight increase, but.
Yeah, which was the anticipation. Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Antor?
Matthew, how, are these numbers, these dollar miles for home repair services, is that distributed throughout the county to all the?
Yeah, that's everywhere except the city of Grand Rapids and the city of Wyoming, because they're entitlement districts.
And is this money all been spent already or is it still out there?
No, this is new money that started, well, will start once this contract's approved, yeah, for the community for this fiscal year.
But like, folks in my township or the village, they have this information, they know the money's available?
They should, and we'll make sure that they, we'll send out some notice.
I'll make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you.
You bet.
Commissioner Bukowski?
Thanks. Yeah, since I had so much fun abstaining on item number three, I'm going to abstain on this again with HUD, because I have been working with corporate council on another attempt to get a waiver of the conflict of interest with disability advocates, and so I'll just leave my abstention at that.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any abstaining?
One.
And any noes? Okay, with that, the motion passes. We will go on to item number seven from the Parks. Wayman?
Yes, this is a request to the Board of Commissioners to approve the land acquisition project agreement as provided by the Michigan Department of Natural Resources for the acquisition of approximately 124 acres to expand Chief Hazy Cloud Park, to create the Chief Hazy Cloud Park Expansion Project in the 2018 Capital Improvement Fund budget, and to accept and appropriate $4.4 million from the DNR, $3.1 million from Ada Township, and $400,000 from the Kent County, I'm sorry, $400,000 Ada Township and Kent County Parks Foundation, $938,000. On March 23, 2017, the Board of Commissioners approves the middle of a grant request to Michigan Department National Resources Trust Fund seeking funding to acquire approximately 124 acres of land adjacent to Chief Hazy Cloud Park and Ada Township on the Grand River. The DNR Trust Fund approved the project with grant funding to cover up to 70% of the total cost of the acquisition, estimated at $4.4 million. Funding and acquisition will occur in two phases, 2018 and 2019. The project agreement represents the first of the two years. The $1.3 million local match will be funded with $400,000 from Ada Township and $938,000 from the Kent County Parks Foundation. To proceed with the grant award, the DNR requires a resolution by the Board of Commissioners indicating acceptance of the terms in this project agreement, including the appropriation of required funds. The agreement has been reviewed and approved, asked of form by corporate council.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Questions, comments, and discussion. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you. Hey, Raj.
Come on up, Roger Sabine, our Friendly Parks Director.
This is adjacent to Hazy Cloud, correct?
Yes.
And so what is that total footprint if this, I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
Around 400 acres.
400 acres, right along the river there.
Yes, about three miles of riverfront.
I think that's outstanding, so.
It is.
It's a big footprint.
It's outstanding that the state's giving us this money, so.
Commissioner Bukowski?
Well, it's outstanding that the state's returning some of our money to ourselves.
Don't take your own old house you don't.
Sorry, yeah, yeah. The state doesn't have money, it takes it from us willingly by some of us and returns a small portion thereof. As Adam Luden already said, you know, we're trying to get various matches at the state level where they say they will be and we believe they should be. All of that digression back to, this is, again, absolutely excellent work, and back to my comment about what really is our 15, 20-year vision. I note in this that there's no general fund in this, and like, how do we really make sure we have enough of our locally controlled resources so that we can leverage these opportunities when they come up? And then, the easy part, air quotes, you know, the easy part is purchasing the 400 acres, the hard part's going to be developing and then maintaining it, which I really want to do. This is not in my district at all, you know, we've seen in the CIP, the, is it Two Rivers or Three Rivers South, the Lowell piece, you know, stuff north of town. We know where we want and need these regional parks, and again, can we say, here's our 20-year vision, here's the cost, and people are going to, I think people are going to love that we make this investment, because, you know, we see pictures on this wall about Millennium Park, which was barely a dream 20 years ago, and now is an awesome regional asset. This could be another one. So anyways, no question, only a comment, let's get serious about a 20-year vision for parks so we can make this stuff real, so.
I think we do have a vision.
I got it.
Right. I mean, I think.
Maybe I'll say we need a.
We need a funded 20-year plan. We don't have a funded 20-year plan. We have a great vision.
I agree with Commissioner Bukowski that we need a plan, 20 years out.
Okay.
I.
How long's it going to take to pay off the parking ramp at the airport?
Oh, why, why do you get so personal?
Personal, 20-year missions, not business. Capital assets. Sorry, sorry, Chair.
It's about 50% of our revenue out there, but I digress. So anyway, I agree that we do need a plan, and we did have a strategic. So, anyway, I agree that we do need a plan, and we did have a strategic plan a few years ago, Commissioner Bukowski, and I think, what's your title, Wayman?
Wayman. Administrator.
I think you're administrator. Wayman Britt, Mr. Britt, I should probably say, is probably going to try to facilitate that activity this year or next, but, you know, he's new to the job, so I'm giving him a little bit of slack, but I'm really looking forward to be involved with that plan. I do think we need a plan. I think 20 years is a little far for funding forecasts, but.
Roger, you want?
Beyond the county's strategic plan, we are working on our five-year master plan, which will be.
You better go to seven so Commissioner Bukowski, you know, can see some.
Okay, any other questions, comments, or discussion? Yes, Commissioner Bukowski.
Just to clarify, my comment about the airport wasn't at all to make fun of or light of that decision. It was only used as an example. Sometimes these assets have a very long life, and a park, we hope, to have many, many generations. So, we can pay for them over 20 years. We don't have to put them in a one-year budget, so to speak, so.
Now, you know, like, Commissioner Bukowski's an attorney and I'm an ambulance driver, but...
Hey, Commissioner Hennessy.
If you're in the midst of a five-year plan, right now developing a five-year strategic plan, how are you approaching it? Will we be involved? I mean, I always have my dog park ideas. How are you going to incorporate our ideas in this?
Correct. So, we've had discussions with Wayman and Matthew, and there will be some involvement, how that takes shape. We're still trying to figure that one out. But we do, you know, we do this every five years so that we're eligible for the DNR grants, and we get a pretty good return on what we submit, and so it's been successful up to this point, and we'll be working on our five-year plan to have it done by the end of this year, we hope.
It'll be coming back to you at some point.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. That brings us to item eight miscellaneous. Is there any, Commissioner miscellaneous this morning? Yes, Commissioner Melton?
Chair, I just have a couple. There were a handful of us that attended the crisis center presentation of the law firm. I thought that they had organized it very well, there were certainly questions about how really this will look, how it will benefit, but as you don't know, I would encourage you to learn more about it. Hopefully, we'll vet out those who are being picked up by our chairs, please, and it's known right away that perhaps there are some health issues, and instead of going through the huddled up process involved, they will go straight to a process that will help them get the 24-hour immediate care that might make their time, whatever, less threatening and a greater benefit, which I think in the end will really help a lot of us in how they look. Obviously, there were a lot of questions about that, and I do encourage people to learn more about it and to have a very nice plan. And then the other one is, you know, summer is party time. Miranda is going to be at the beautiful Easycatwood Stadium on Thursday from noon to 2:00. Free lunch if you're under 18, that kind of rules out everybody in this room, because we know someone. Haircuts, backpacks, and free backpacks, and the horses will be there, and games and whatever else. So, come out and enjoy our Catwood Stadium and meet Miranda and bring your kids there. You have a really good time.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we will adjourn.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County.
I'm me, Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
Oh, yeah.